Whatever they call it. All right, Tim, we're good? All right, good evening, everybody. For the record, it's 5:15 PM on Thursday, May 11th, 2023. The City Council is out of executive session. I've called the meeting to order. We always start with the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. So, maybe Councilmember Cuevas, would you lead us?
Yes, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Cuevas. A roll call this evening. We have six council members with us. Councilmember Huffaker, are you with us on teams?
I am here.
All right, great, thank you. Our first item of business tonight would be citizen comment. So this would be a time for any member of the audience that wishes to address the City Council on something that's on tonight's agenda or not, please feel free to come up, unless you're wearing a pumpkin-colored shirt, then nobody will... (laughter) Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Carl Ellard, 1500 Third Street in Wenatchee. I wanted to speak about one of the wonderful Wenatchee projects, and tonight I brought some pictures.
Oh, cool.
So, if...
Tim, help me here.
We thought we had it figured out, but apparently we were wrong.
One moment, please.
There we go. So I think you'll all recognize this picture, the South End pedestrian over crossing. Great project. I think the South End deserves some love and some attention after a lot of years. I think it's great. I had some comments concerning this project, which is a great project. You'll see that the area from Thurston, which is on the left of this picture, up to the Dog Park and the George Sellers Bridge, which is down to the right. There we go. And the one thing I want to bring up, only because it's been in the news recently, the police patrols that PUD has contracted for apparently stop to the north or far left of this and would not extend to this area. So this goes from the Thurston Undercrossing down to the Dog Park. And what I wanted to talk about was this. This is trash. This is transient trash, and the transient camps that exist from the Thurston Undercrossing all the way down to the Dog Park. And I've got a limited number of pictures. I could have taken a lot more, but I think you'll see the point. There are about seven obvious transient camps from the Thurston Undercrossing down to the Dog Park, couple more going north of the Dog Park, but the tents that are set up there, the gentleman that lives there is pretty clean. He takes care of his own trash pretty effectively. Unending trash.
There we go.
I could tell you the content of that trash, but there's some younger people in the audience that I don't want to get warped because it's pretty disgusting at times. And the trash gets there through obvious means such as shopping carts that are taken from the different stores and businesses, bicycles, most likely stolen, and I say that only because I pulled more than one stolen bicycle out down there. I don't know that this one in particular is stolen. I didn't go down to get it. A lot of bicycles go up missing. It's not just down below toward the riverside, it's along the street side. So this is what people see when they're walking along the Riverside Trail down at this end. Please note that the PUD through Allied Universal goes down and trespasses people in these camps. If they stay there, they call the Wenatchee Police Department for action. If they move, unfortunately, they can move to one of the other camps in that area, and the trespass is ineffective, in case somebody wants to be comfortable during their stay down there. I like this one because there are bicycle parts thrown out in the weeds. This isn't a camp area. This is just trash thrown out over the side into the weeds. We're getting close. If you're bored seeing trash pictures, we'll be through them pretty quick. Another camp. This is an interesting one, and this is the area just north of the parking area for the skate park, Dog Park, Hale Park. It was a real troubled area. Public Works and the Wenatchee Police Department cleared out this encampment, a large encampment some time ago. It started being reoccupied. I called the non-emergency number, and a Wenatchee Police Department officer responded within the day, cleared the gentleman out. Unfortunately, when you see the transient in these areas, the trash remains. The tent may leave, but the trash remains. This is an interesting picture in that you see clothes and a pillow. The pillows are given out by the ministries, as are the clothes. I can say that I have collected multiple wardrobes full of discarded clothes and picking up the Riverside Trail. Maybe 50 bags full of wardrobes of clothes and some pillows that were pretty disgusting. And then moving on, the other issue, of course, is graffiti. And just to call what the nice new concrete of the overpass will look like pretty quickly, there is the abutment of the will be connected to the pedestrian bridge, which maybe it'll be renamed from what it is now, once it's a pedestrian connection. This is the Thurston Undercrossing, which I really didn't do much in there because it's become a hazard and somewhat dangerous. I personally walked through it because even though I'm old, I'm maybe big enough, and I'm a guy, so I don't have a lot of fear. A lot of other people won't walk through that undercrossing anymore. I happened to catch it in the day with the Wenatchee Police Department had cleared it out, and I thank them very much for the time they do. And what I want to say is, as part of a pedestrian project in that South End, this is what Washdaw did in their yard at the end of Columbia, putting a lot of rocks and boulders. And so what I would like to say is that as part of this South End pedestrian overcrossing project, the potential to place large boulders and rocks down in some of these transient camping areas to reduce or prevent the transients from camping in there might help to reduce some of the trash. It's a pretty big concern of mine that we're going to spend 11-plus million dollars on a beautiful new pedestrian overcrossing, and I heard terms of beautify the South End, which I think is appropriate, and it's a great goal. But unfortunately, putting a pedestrian overcrossing over the top of a trash dump does not seem like an appropriate. This picture, the reason I brought this picture in, it shows what one person can do. This area was occupied by four or five tents. I actually have the pictures, but it shows not to include them with a lot of trash. One member of the Wenatchee Public Works Department took it upon himself to clean this area up and keep it clean. I saw him down there when I was at the Dog Park with my dogs eight or 10 times, going through to check on it, to pick up any residual trash. And as you can see, for six months, it stayed pristine. And so one person can do it, and that was one member of the Public Works unheralded. I know his name, it doesn't matter because he doesn't need his name out here in the public. And the only thing I want to say to finish this off is, because it's always nice to finish on a nice note, the Marmot population would like the trash removed, too.
Thank you, Carl. Anybody else wish to address the City Council on something that's either on tonight's agenda or not? Seeing no other takers, we have a number of items on our agenda tonight. The first will be the consent items, and then we have a number of proclamations. So I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent items as presented. So, councilmembers?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings. Also, a motion for the City Council to approve the final contract voucher with T.W. Clark Construction LLC for project number 1716, Wenatchee City Hall Redevelopment Project and authorize a mayor's signature.
Second? Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Roger Nastetien, to adopt the... approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from our previous meetings and approve the motion for the council to approve the final contract voucher with T.W. Clark Construction LLC for project 1716, Wenatchee City Hall Redevelopment Project and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 presentations. Is anybody here for the Jonathan Garcia-Mendoza Day proclamation you made? All right. So, Councilmember Cuevas, would you read that into the record, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Whereas the city of Wenatchee resident Jonathan Garcia-Mendoza plays as a defender for the Wenatchee FC Youth B-09 Snyder Team and was identified by scouts at the ID-2 Identification Camp in August of 2022 as an outstanding soccer player. Whereas Jonathan Garcia-Mendoza participated in the U.S. Soccer Club's ID-2 West Coast Selection Event in February 2023 in Sacramento, California, where he was selected to play in the U.S. Club Soccer's ID-2 National Selection International Tour overseas, traveling to London and Manchester for an immersed experience of training, competition, and culture. Whereas Jonathan Garcia-Mendoza is one of the top 18 players for his age nationwide to emerge from the prestigious National ID-2 Identification Program, and it is a great achievement and honor to be chosen. Whereas the city of Wenatchee is proud and excited for Jonathan and for his future as a leader in both soccer and the community. Now, therefore, I Frank J. Coons, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, hereby proclaim May 11th, 2023, as Jonathan Garcia-Mendoza Day in the city of Wenatchee, and invite all residents to celebrate Jonathan Garcia-Mendoza for his accomplishments and representation of the Wenatchee Valley and the Wenatchee Valley FC Soccer Club. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 11th day of May 2023. Frank J. Coons, Mayor.
Thank you, Jose. Where's Jonathan at? Get up here, come on. Who are all these people? I don't have this many fans.
My teammates.
Your teammates? Who else?
My family.
Well, introduce your family, so I know who they are.
Oh, my dad.
Not all of them, if there's like more than 10, so...
There's a lot more than 10. Just like everyone right there, yeah.
So what's it like to be playing? Is it international soccer?
Yeah, I went and go play in England.
England?
Yeah.
So you know the language over there?
Yeah, what?
It's English, by the way, it's okay. Oh, picture. Hold on. Congratulations. Thank you for representing our city all over the country for us, right? Remember, every time you leave, you're representing the city of Wenatchee, okay? All right, congratulations, my friend. Thank you guys for being here. Thank you all. Are you good, Dan?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here. And you don't have to stay for all of the meeting if you don't want to. If you want to leave early, it's okay. Yeah, leave whenever you need to leave. Oh, there they all go.
Gonna go watch the smile on that.
Yeah, good call.
Police week.
Keith, we're gonna give him a few minutes to take some pictures. No, it's okay.
Where's Wenatchee World?
Yeah, that would've been a good one for Wenatchee World.
They'll pick all this stuff up online, so... All right, let's end on that note. All right, everybody, we'll move on. This is, next is Police Week proclamation. Councilmember Poyer, you have that?
I do. It's exciting because I know every city councilperson and a mayor, this is a blessing for me to be able to read this. The proclamation to designate May 14th of 2023 as National Police Week, whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Wenatchee Police Department played an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens of our community. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that the members of our department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence or disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas our police department has grown to be a modern and professional law enforcement agency, which unseasonably provides a vital public service. Now, therefore, I Frank Coons, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do recognize the week of May 14th of 2023 as National Police Week and further extend appreciation to our police chief Steve Crown and to all law enforcement for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they serve. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 11th day of May 2023. Frank J. Coons, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Poyer. Who's coming up? Chief, you got it?
I know, you got the whole crew back there.
That's for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Everyone, thank you. How are you doing?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks. How are you? Hey, how are you?
Well, first of all, next week has kind of the bittersweet feel to it. Obviously, we celebrate law enforcement officers that don the uniform every single day, go out there and give their very best to the community, and that's also an opportunity to recognize that gave the ultimate sacrifice in this job. So we're real excited about next week. We actually have an award ceremony down at the Convention Center where we get to recognize one of our officers as Officer of the Year. So, pretty cool celebration, and these guys are the ones that do it every single day and work 24/7, 365 for you, the citizens of Wenatchee. So, they deserve the claps.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here. Hey.
Picture.
I can't be in front of Stephanie.
We talking our tongue. Yes.
All right, what a great, what a great way to start the meeting. You kidding me? All right, so next up is Provider Appreciation Day proclamation. Top, you've got that?
I have that on here. Thank you.
Provider Appreciation Day, whereas childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day, and whereas childcare provides a safe nurturing place for the enrichment and development of millions of children nationwide and is a vital force in our economy, and whereas the pandemic illuminated how indispensable childcare providers are for the well-being and economic security of Wenatchee's young children, families, and communities, and whereas childcare programs, which are mostly small businesses run and staff predominantly by women, are still recovering from health and financial hardships stemming from the pandemic, while they have continued to meet the needs of families, and whereas the city of Wenatchee recognizes that childcare has been a lifeline for families, communities, and the economy, and that our future depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to young children today. Support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now, therefore, I Frank J. Coons, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, hereby proclaim May 12th, 2023, as Provider Appreciation Day in the city of Wenatchee, and urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 11th day of May 2023. Frank J. Coons, Mayor.
Thank you, Top. Gloria? Where's Gloria? How are you? Come on, get a drink up here. It's not just you. How are you? Can you say a few words?
Yes, like, thank you to you, Mayor, for recognizing us, and thank you to all the staff here. This is the 5% of the labor or early learning in this area, Chelan County. We don't bring all the team because we can't not fit in here. But we want you guys to know our faces, like, what we're doing for this community, or the childhood is very important for us, and thank you for recognizing us, and we want to keep working together and keep this community growing in a healthy and positive environment for our own childrens. And thank you, and this is my...
Come on, get over here. We gotta get a picture. Come on. Thank you, guys, for all of your work. I mean, the work you do day in and day out for our youth is amazing, so thank you. Let's get our picture taken. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. All right, so next is Public Works Appreciation Proclamation. Public Works Week. Linda, you've got that?
Yes, I do. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Wenatchee, Washington. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Wenatchee to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I Frank J. Coons do hereby designate the week of May 21st to 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have hereto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 11th day of May 2023. Frank J. Coons, Mayor.
Thank you, Linda. So, Rob, Jessica, who gets this? I see Jessica back there. Jacob's gonna claim he's just an engineer, he's not a public works person, but we all know better. I'm giving that to you. You taking a picture first? All right, because you get to talk. Since Rob's not talking, or do you want Rob to talk?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, whenever the proclamation comes about, I always am just, the only thing I can think of is every single day, the thousands of things that occur in the city that Public Works is responsible for. We have 77 staff to get up every morning to make sure the water's flowing, the toilets are flushing, the signals are working, the pavement's to drive on. It's not a very, it's a humbling job because people sort of take it for granted, but boy, when it doesn't work, they sure let us know about it. And so, just from, thank you to the audience and to City Council for your support of the Public Works Department. We really appreciate it. We have a great team here, and the engineering group, Jacob and Charlotte's here. We have, we have a lot going on in the city.
Yes, we do.
And so, just a side anecdote, a consultant this week was here from the west side, and they were looking at all the things that we have going on here, and they said, "The city of Bellevue has 150,000 people, and you have more going on here than they do." So, anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thanks, guys. Thank you all. All right, and Councilmember Koulas, National Historic Preservation Month.
Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Now, therefore, I Frank J. Coons, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim the month of May as National Historic Preservation Month in the city of Wenatchee, and I urge all people in our community to join me in recognizing historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride, promoting heritage, and the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 11th day of May 2023. Frank J. Coons, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Koulas, anybody here to get the Historic Preservation Month proclamation? Oh, there's Heather in the back. I thought you were here just to watch. How are you? Long time no see. You gonna say something profound? More profound than me?
Well, I'll say I'm here on behalf of the entire Historic Preservation Board. We're a board of volunteers that serves the city, and among our, among our charges are both outreach and to actually see certificates of appropriateness and special valuations. So we have a lot of really wonderful work that's happened, especially in the last five to seven years in Wenatchee. Part of that was what we were celebrating earlier this week, what the Reimagine Wenatchee Group, so encourage all of you to get out and enjoy our listed structures on our registers as well as our national districts in the city, and they contribute to, they are our shared heritage, and the folks that are rehabilitating them and inhabiting them are bringing dynamism and vibrance to them, which just continues to reinforce our shared cultural and economic vitality, so...
Thank you.
Oh, we have to get your picture taken. Act like you like me for a second. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
You know, I didn't make it to the gym today, but I got my steps in. All right, Mr. Nice, tell us about Common Ground. How are you, sir?
Well, so do I advance these on my own? I guess I do.
Yeah.
So I made it through this slide deck earlier today in about 11.5 minutes.
Excellent. So you'll break a world record today then, won't you?
I'm not gonna be able to do that now because I just explained that I made it earlier in 11.5 minutes, so it'll probably be closer as well. My name is Tom Neese, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to come and chat, and thank you, City Council members, for hearing what it is that we're doing. My name is Tom Neese, I'm the Executive Director of Serv Wenatchee Valley. I've served in that role for about six years, been in nonprofit work for about 30. And about six years ago, or four years ago, Serv Wenatchee Valley became the fiscal sponsor of Common Ground Community Housing Trust, simply because we recognize that one of the challenges that we have in the houseless prevention organization that we are at Serv Wenatchee was inventory. Inventory continues to be a challenge, it is now. And so, you guys know the problem. You know, the case of affordability is significant, particularly in Washington State. We are number six in terms of the highest housing wage needed to be able to afford a modest apartment in our state. It takes a wage of $31.33 an hour at a 40-hour week to be able to afford a modest apartment, or if you're earning minimum wage, 86 hours a week to be able to afford that same apartment. As you perhaps know, the Department of Commerce came out with some statistics based on community growth over the course of the next 20 years, and has given some directives and recommendations for the local need of housing. Here in Chelan County, over the next 20 years, at a median population growth, we are going to need to deliver over 10,000 housing units. And again, this is not just individual housing units in terms of a single home. It's housing units as a whole, including apartments, you know, townhomes, et cetera. I've broken that down into the Wenatchee School District because the Wenatchee School District and the Eastmont School District is Common Ground's footprint that we are focusing on. And so that means for Chelan, or for the Wenatchee School District, we need to deliver 5,700 units over the course of the next 20 years. In Douglas County or Eastmont School District boundaries, that's about 5,100. They also took a look at, the Department of Commerce did, what we have built over the course of the last 40 years. So from 1980 to 2000, we delivered about 413 units in Chelan County. From 2000 to 2020, we delivered about 343 units per year. We are going to need to deliver from 2024 to 2044, 501 units per year. It's a significant increase. Again, if you break that down into the Wenatchee School District area, that's 285 units over the course of, per year, over the next 20 years. Commerce also broke down affordability as part of their recommendations. And so, the recommendation from Commerce is saying that 55% of what we are delivering need to be affordable below the 80% area median income level. In the Wenatchee School District, that means we are going to need to deliver 157 units per year that are attainable for those earning less than 80% of our area median income. So the Community Housing Trust, just to give you a little bit of an overview, what a Community Housing Trust is, is a community-led development of individually-owned homes on community-owned land. What we are going to do is acquire, own, and steward land permanently for the common good. It creates a dual ownership opportunity, and again, our focus is specifically homeownership. There's some rationale for that that I'll present to you in a minute, but we are focusing on homeownership. So the individual owns the improvement, the Community Land Trust owns the land, and there's a ground lease that's recorded at sale that connects the two, making it permanently affordable, indeed restricted, for the next buyer of the home. So you create a lower price initially, you create a lower price at resale, and this happens over and over and over again. The master ground lease that is signed is a 99-year ground lease, which gives the opportunity for the homebuyer to be able to go through conventional mortgage financing opportunities to acquire that property. Does the Community Land Trust work? Community land trusts have been around since the Civil Rights Movement in the 1960s. There are many of them around the country. There are about 25 of them in the state of Washington. It is a tried and tested model nationally, regionally, and even locally. MetHow Community Housing Trust currently has 67 units that are being lived in, and 50-plus in their pipeline in development. Chelan Valley Housing Trust delivered five units two years ago. On Emerson Street, downtown Chelan, they delivered five units at $200,000 apiece in downtown Chelan. And that's in an area where the average home price is in excess of $600,000. And Share Community Housing Trust up in Leavenworth is the longest-standing in our county. It has 24 units in portfolio and about 50 rental units that they are currently in the process of acquiring. So again, it's below market rate, we know that we have to fill the gap of delivery and affordability. So if it takes $400,000 to be able to deliver these units, a family earning 80% or less cannot afford that. We've got to fill that gap down to a level that they can afford. It is resale restricted when they sell it, so it becomes permanently affordable. And I think that's the challenge that we're facing right now in our community. It was, we haven't had a vision for permanent affordability that can live through generations of time. There's an, there's a wealth gap certainly in our community, which is, this is one of the reasons we're really focused on homeownership, because we want to not only provide a house for someone to live in, but we also want families to thrive in our community and to be able to progress and move through their own economic growth and be able to take that next step. And so, the, the wealth gap in our community nationally, there's a $225,000 net worth average of a homeowner in this country. Of home renter, that number is about five, and that's on a national scale. You're talking about a 40 times difference between a renter and an owner. 95% of shared equity homes are priced affordably. And so that means that their mortgage payment is less than one-third of their income, which is a national standard, to make sure. I can tell you, those that we serve at Serv Wenatchee are 50 to 70% of their household income is going toward housing costs. It's simply overwhelming. Seven out of 10 shared equity homeowners are first-time homebuyers. We know that in this, you know, in our community and communities all over the country, that on the housing ladder, first-time homebuyer inventory is largely non-existent. Minority households from 1985 to 2000, shared equity housing and CLTs were delivering about 13% of their inventory to minority populations. That grew to 43% as of 2018, and it continues to grow. Families and, of our families of color in our communities cannot afford, and there's a very intentional effort to be able to fill that gap in affordability for our families of color in our communities. Over 99% of shared equity homes avoid foreclosure proceedings. That's a significant number because it did not change in 2007, 2008 through 2010. That number remained there, and largely it's because of stewardship, which I'll talk about in just a moment. Six out of 10 shared equity homeowners use their earned equity to eventually purchase a traditional market-rate home. Because they're able to acquire wealth during their stay in the home, they now can use that equity to move into market-rate housing. I talked about stewardship. Stewardship serves in three ways. It serves the homeowner because it helps attain homeownership at the front end. It also helps retain homeownership. The reason that it retains homeownership is because there's a process that you go through at the front end to make sure they're moving into a house that they can afford. There's a, that you're selling it at a price that the family can afford at the front end, and so their mortgage is consistent and keeps them there. We also are stewards of the subsidy. The subsidy model is you fill that gap at the front end, but you don't have to replace that subsidy over time. Because it's resale restricted, it is sold in perpetuity, and you don't have to come back when the family sells to reinstitute the subsidy. It's a one-time subsidy that lasts for the life of the home. And then, of course, you're stewarding the home with quality construction and promotes sound maintenance over time. You don't have downtrodden community land trust homes because the land trust owns the land and has a vested interest and can stay connected throughout the, throughout the process. So where are we today? Common Ground Community Housing Trust received our nonprofit status back in 2021. We have a board of directors, one of which is a city staff member. Rob Jemmerman is sitting on our board, and we're very grateful for that. We have six community work groups that are, that have community members. One of the members of the, of the council here, and Linda sits on one of those. And we're getting ready to meet to talk about eligibility criteria. And Laura Gloria, a city staff, also sits on one. We have two part-time staff. We acquired a grant this last year through ARPA funds through the county, and we were able to go acquire our first piece of property. So we now have our first piece of property in deed. And so we are ready to develop that, and what we're going to do, we've gone through the pre-app process with the city, and going to deliver eight cottage units on .4 acres of, of land. And that's the kind of density that we're gonna have to think about if we're going to be able to meet the thresholds that are recommended from Commerce as we move. This is the, just a picture of the site plan that we presented in our first go-round. We're calling it Krail Cottages in deference to the family that made this available to us at a discounted price to be able to step into this piece of property. This is a simple example. It is not a mock-up of what we are creating, but it's a mock-up of a cottage home that perhaps will be a model moving forward of what we are wanting to create. This is our team on the property. Property is over on Ninth Street, and you kick the team out of the way, and you can see the property line extends back. There are a number of properties in our city that have extended boundary lines back that give the opportunity for doing some infill development on those. And so, this is really a 30,000-foot, really quick flyover of where we are right now. I want to take certainly an opportunity to express appreciation to the city for a number of things. One is the, you know, the city staff and the planning department and public works that is working with us to help this be successful. That public-private partnership is critical for us to be able to deliver on our commitment and your, your ability to deliver on that commitment as well. Want to thank you for the financial support. We're receiving 20,000 a year from the City of Wenatchee for the next three years for operational support, and that is incredibly helpful. We, we also just want to challenge you to be in partnership with us as we move forward to think about creative ways to fund this, because again, we're looking at filling that gap. We're looking, there's, there's dollars that are coming out of Commerce, there's some public works. We know that it's not just about housing, it's about infrastructure. You're not gonna be able to deliver on that without the infrastructure, and there's all kinds of ways that we can work together. This is our part of the solution. This is not the solution, but this is our part of the solution, and we are actively pursuing our part of the solution, and we thank you for your partnership with helping us to do that. Do you have any questions?
So obviously, there's a need, and what you're doing is a tremendous job. I'm, I'm just kind of curious on, you got 100 people on a list for one of these units, and you go, how do you, how do they qualify? I'm just, just roughly, not take too much time, qualify? And then I'm curious also on the resale. I understand when you're in now, I can, if I'm living in one, I can now have, I can build up some equity to get out. What's my incentive to get out? Because I know, obviously, if that's the thought process, it means you're not enabling, and you're, you're seeing a bigger picture here. Can you help me with those things?
Sure. So the eligibility criteria, these homes that we're building right now are going to have the window of 65 to 80% of area median income. That's, that's the window that we're looking at. So that's number one criteria, is that your household income needs to be verified and documented at between 65 and 80% of our area median income. Then there are additional criteria that, actually, one of our work groups that Linda sits on is our eligibility criteria group. So we're gonna look at, in the process of developing this, what's the residential standard? Do they have to have lived here for a certain amount of time? That's another standard that you can, that you can put in play. And so there, we are in development of what those standards are, but there will be a very clear list of that criteria. And then the process for application, I can tell you that up in Chelan, they had over 100 applications for five units. We know that we're gonna have that here, that's gonna be more. And so, what we're going to do with our eligibility team and other CLTs in the area is to create a prioritized list of what we're looking for, and then it will be a lottery draw is how we will select those. And so, that, that's how we're going to go through the process of selecting, and then families will remain on that list for a period of time as inventory continues to become available and can re-enter into the draw. The ability to earn equity, of course, is two ways. One is when you pay rent, you're earning no equity. When you're paying a mortgage, you're paying down your principal every month, a certain portion of that. The other way is that we have a 1.5% fixed-rate formula to be able to put in. And so when they, written into the master ground leases, that they are earning 1.5% per year that they're in the home. They're not restricted by the amount of time that they can be there, but there is, if they sell after five to seven years, and that 1.5% is part of the equity that comes back in as well as pay down.
So you're projecting five to seven years after I'm in one of these places? If I got through the road.
That's the national average. National average of staying in a home is five to seven years.
In this, in this model? Yeah, love it, okay. Boy, impressive.
So you're gonna start building this year, you hope? Because you, do you have money to build, or is the bank gonna loan you enough money to go?
We are in process of developing funding to build. We've got, you know, of course, we got the grant to be able to get the, get the property. And now we're looking to a couple of different philanthropic sources for some funding and also some state funding, which I also, with regard to the eligibility criteria, if you go to certain funding sources, it changes your eligibility. For instance, if you go to federal money, some HUD money, it reduces that number of area median income down to 50. And so, we're looking at state dollars, Housing Trust Fund, and, and several other sources, .09 dollars through the county we're gonna look to. And, yeah. So we're in the process of hunting down the money to find it.
The idea, I mean, if you use grant money to build it, to do it, and then you turn around and sold them with conventional mortgages, then you could go build the next one.
Exactly, that's, that's what this model itself does, is it gives you a constant flow to be able to move to the next project. And my, this is scary. Is this being recorded?
No, yes.
Never mind. My goal is to have 60, I, I wanna, I wanna have 67 units in this town that we've been able to deliver in the next five years.
Perfect.
That's aggressive.
It is aggressive, however, they did it in MetHow. If they can do it up there in the MetHow, we can do it here in Wenatchee.
I think Keith has a question. Yeah, Keith, go ahead.
Yes, Councilmember Hupaker. Hey, I'm wondering if you're looking at building on-site or whether you would use a prefab home that could just be brought in? Because I know, you know, when you're looking at a prefab home, you're gonna say, there's gonna be savings of money there.
We are looking at, we are looking at prefab homes, yes. We, we are investigating, that's part of our process of, that we are in the middle of. We're, we're looking at multiple construction methods. We're, we're looking at 3D printing. It is another model that is a potential. But we're looking at prefab and bringing those in and stick-built. So, yes, we're, we are open to all different types, and we're really wanting to stay eco-sensitive. We want to make sure that we're, we're building them for our community that are eco-sensitive and environmentally, you know, caring for, make, make sure that we've got higher-than-needed R-values and environmentally stay responsible.
Is there any chance to use something that's already previously constructed and convert to something that would fit in a model? An apartment building that you can convert to condos that would fit, or some other? I'm just trying to think of other ways to add to the, to the volume that you're trying to add to.
Yeah, so what we're doing right now is a greenfield, you know, just a greenfield development. We're gonna start, you know, with a, with a blank slate, well, once we get the house down. The house, there is a house on that that was built in 1928, and we're gonna, we're gonna take that down and replace it with eight. So we are looking also at single homes. If, if there are individual homes that are there that might be able to be made available to us to go in and refurbish those and turn those around, do kind of a nonprofit flip on those, and other opportunities like you, like you just spoke about. We are going to stay, however, at least. We are going to stay, however, at least for the foreseeable future centered on home ownership. We're not organizationally, the CLT model allows you to go into renting, allows you to go into farm development, allows you to go into business incubation. There's a lot of different things we could do, but we really want to stay focused where we are right now on home ownership and then grow into maybe some of those areas somewhere down the road.
Excellent. Any other questions for Tom? Wish you the best of luck. Let us know what we can do. I know you're working with staff. I know you've got Rob on your board and Laura helping you and your success is our success. So we wish you the best of luck and it's a pleasure to give you some money for a little while and keep us posted on how that's going. I know you're still out trying to raise funds to keep things operational.
That's why I'm here to thank you for helping us get, because we don't get to the place we are right now without the organizational support to to help us get here. Without the organization, this doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, appreciate it.
All right, we have a few action items here this evening. The first is presentation regarding the Shalan County Solid Waste Plan. And I see Brenda is here, so Aaron, come on up and let us know what's happening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Aaron Kelly, Public Works Operations Manager. This is Brenda Blanchfield, the Shalan County Solid Waste Coordinator. We're here tonight with the Shalan County Solid Waste Management Plan update and have a resolution twenty twenty three dash ten for your consideration. But first Brenda will give an overview of the plan and the updates.
Hello, and thank you for having me here. It's good to see the council and mayor.
Get closer to the microphones, everyone at home can hear you.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate being able to talk about the plan here. It's been a very good coordination with the cities and the counties. We've had the solid waste advisory committee, which Aaron sits on, and the solid waste council with Councilman Huffaker sits on. We've done a lot of successful projects with this coordination and one is just the recent moderate risk waste facility, which is going very well. So I'll say the plan is required by RCW seventy eight two oh five and has to be adopted by the county and the cities every five years. So we've been doing this for the last couple of years with the council and I'll just kind of do a quick overview of what this is and we can certainly have questions. The first couple chapters are about the population growth, the demographics. What I noticed is that the state average is about thirteen pounds of garbage generated by a person in Shalan County and in the cities here, we're down at eleven. So and that is some of the root is trying to reduce waste before it is waste. The other chapters, well, the other one is reducing waste. We're emphasizing reusing items, buying materials in bulk with less packaging, servicing or utilizing goodwills and repairing items. In our recycling chapters, we have successfully, we're looking at a thirty four percent rate for the county and the cities. The goal was fifty percent, so that that's a vague state survey to get that thirty four percent because, as you know, there's a lot of things you may recycle or reuse that isn't really able to get accounted by the state. We recently just did the contaminated outreach plan, which all of us adopted as well. And we've implemented a new platform called the Waste Wizard. It's on all our and it's on our county website and it's available to the cities. I'm not sure if the city of Wenatchee has put that on their website yet. It's a pretty cool little tool. You just, if you have something you want to recycle and you're not sure what to do with it, you just, it has a drop down menu and it's really easy, user friendly, and it'll tell you where and when. And it has everything you could imagine on there. And and part of the driver was that was because we had a contamination problem. You may have heard of the China Sword where all of our recyclables got returned or cut off and we were supposed to come up with some new problem because or new process because they were tired of receiving garbage in our recyclables. So one of the big themes was no plastic bags and limiting what kind of plastics. Our wishful recycling sometimes needs to get pared down and just focus on what's really going to work. In our organics chapter, we talk about all the ways to reduce our brush and recycle and compost. We had the recent adoption by the legislature of HB seventeen ninety nine where we all had to, actually, the city of Wenatchee and just Shalan County had to adopt a procurement ordinance where you're required to spec out or purchase any compost for any public projects, stormwater projects, what have you. And by two thousand eighteen, we're supposed to meet fifty percent of that amount of yard waste we're collecting. So I'm I'm not sure how that's going to pan out, but we'll see. We've we've kind of shot ourselves in the foot because we have compost or yard waste collections in every community, brush yards. And we got that done before the two thousand and sixteen, but they're taking us back there. So now we're going to have to come up with further composting efforts, according to the And let's see, we've, we may have to ask for an exemption on that. I'm not sure how that'll work out. Of course, backyard composting was brought up and we hope to enhance that, include some more information on how that method can be done. I have been running the show at the solid waste facility or at the county for some time, but we have a new assistant, that's Ashley Kirby.
Ashley.
And so I hope we can do more with other programs and enhance that. One of the later chapters is on our facilities. We have asked that we have expanding our transfer stations. We need an extra tip floor. That's been on the on the list for four or five years. And Shalan Transfer Station needs scales. Right now, we're asking for a grant from the Department of Commerce Estate, so hopefully they can help us with that infrastructure. Chapter eight's about the hazardous waste program and we were able to kind of check that off because of the moderate risk waste facility. By the way, that's doing very well. We've received sixty seven tons of hazardous waste just in twenty twenty two. We're seeing an average of fourteen households a day there. I'm not sure where it's all coming from, but it just keeps on coming. I think everybody's painting and staining and.
I've used it a bunch of times, yeah. So thank you for now you'll take latex, so that's even.
Yeah, that really helps get it all in one place for disposal. And then the rest of the plan addresses hyperdynamic needle disposal. Those can be taken to your pharmacies or the transfer station, how we dispose of asbestos, biomedical waste, tires and construction demolition waste. I didn't mention that before, but we, that's like eighteen percent of our waste stream. So we're hoping to maybe do something with that, possibly pull out the wood, chip it. We tried that before, but we were getting too much nails and brackets. But if we can clean that up, magnet it and reuse some, you know, shower stalls or something like what Habitat Humanity does, or even just help Habitat Humanity expand on what they're doing. I think there's a big opportunity there to capture some of that and reuse it. The rest of it is about administration and staffing and then there's the executive section just to kind of give you that summary.
So quickly, how are we doing on the dump?
On the dump, they estimate about eighty five years left on our dump. So the landfill's got quite a bit of time, plus they've also just permitted another landfill in Adams County.
And are we shipping stuff from out of the area here?
No. Spokane's actually hauling waste here. And there's some other areas that are, Kittenss County is. But I know that some of the the west side had a little trouble with that railroad strike because they rely on those to haul their garbage down to the public. So we're actually sitting in pretty good shape that way.
Good. Any questions for Brenda? I briefly got through, you know, you could hit the blue button on our thing and read it and I read portions of it, so I really don't have any questions. Keith, anything you want to add?
No, I just, I know Mark Kulaos had some concerns about composting and things like that and expanding that, so I would like to see us do a little bit more with that. Recycling in general, to me, the big missing component is education because I can tell you that it's been a problem for a long time where people don't know what's actually recyclable and what's not. The new recycling bins that we have at our house now have a few pictures on it. You get a rough idea of what can go in there, but there's still a big education piece that we're missing here, trying to help people understand what to do with what. You know, instead of just throwing it all in recycling and hope it all works out, unfortunately, that ends up contaminating a lot of what's already in there.
Yeah, we have just recently adopted a in the last plan where every resident in the county and in the cities have curbside recycling available to them. But we do need to increase our education outreach.
Any other questions for Brenda or Aaron? If not, I think there is a motion here for us to adopt the plan. If we had a motion, we could then perhaps discuss it.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve resolution number twenty twenty three dash ten approving the adoption of the Shalan County Solid Waste Management Plan dated April twenty twenty three.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Roger Nostatian to adopt resolution twenty twenty three dash ten approving and adopting the Shalan County Solid Waste Management Plan dated April twenty twenty three. Any discussion, council members?
It's like, you know, to me, the big bugaboo in recycling is glass. It's, I'm just constantly asked, what do we do with glass? Well, at Rotary, we load it up and take it up to Rotary in Shalan, but that's not a sustainable model.
It it's not, and we've talked a little bit locally. I went up to the Shalan Recycling on a Saturday and watched them do it and, you know, just the location of where it's at, the fact that Shalan Public Works is right next door and they can share each other's equipment. You just sit there and you go, where can we duplicate that here with a reasonable amount of money? And I'm not sure where that is. I'm really not. I can't put that into the right spot.
Doesn't the city of Wenatchee have glass near curbside recycling?
No.
Oh, they got taken out.
So for all of waste, they they are not accepting any longer. So I think both sides of the river.
Yeah, and it's remarkable what they do when they crush it. It really is. But again, I just, you know, I don't know if it's a half a million dollars or a million dollars for us to do it and where would you put it and how often are you going to do it and who's in charge of it and you need front end loaders and you need places to store it.
The Rotary clubs are interested in doing something and are looking into it to follow the Lake Shalan Rotary model, which I think that equipment eventually was recovered through grants or something for that.
Yeah, we helped purchase that.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it's out there, but again, it's a volunteer organization, might need some assistance from some staff infrastructure to to get that going. The other thing I'm familiar with and I, you know, I'm not suggesting this, but I'm familiar in some communities that they do recycling audits where they'll go weekly to the same toters and look in and see what's in there and provide advisories to the owners to cut down on the contamination issue. It's somewhat invasive in some people's minds, but when people are throwing like plastic bags in the recycling, you know, and that just tears the equipment up when they get to the recycling center anyway.
They do some auditing up in Leavenworth because of the green waste not being able to leave the quarantine area. So Waste Management had to do some of that auditing and leave information brochures. So that's kind of a model that's already set up in the area.
Yeah. For the curbside recycling waste does do some auditing. Some of the times it's after the fact, of course, after they'd be able to see it dumped that there's contamination, so they start actually checking that cart on a weekly basis. They have been looking at, I know in for commercial recycling, they've already actually implemented this and that is a camera onboard the truck as it dumps, it can actually record if whether or not that customer, let's say, has contamination. It's not only then it gets charged as garbage, but then information sent on, you know, what's contaminated and again, reasons why not to.
All right, we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is a lease agreement between the YMCA and the city of Wenatchee. Laura, you want to tee that up and I'll fill in the gaps if there are any?
Sure. Good evening, council. Laura Gloria, Executive Services Director. The item before you is a lease agreement between the YMCA and the city for parking, specifically for the Wenatchee Police Department's parking. So we've had a lease with the Y for the past twenty years, which ended on November thirtieth. So this is basically the same lease with some different terms. The different terms is that this is a ten year lease and then it also will end at the point in time that the Y sells that property. As many of you know, they are looking to relocate and to build a new facility and so they will be putting that property on the market. So they wanted that flexibility to be able to sell that property when that time came. So we, the lease automatically terminates upon thirty days of closing of a sale of that property. The lease is at one dollar per year, so it's not much that we pay out of pocket, but we do perform snow removal, asphalt repair, maintenance, that kind of stuff. So it isn't free, free or cheap, cheap. Other than that, I don't know if there's anything else that you want me to cover on the terms, but that's pretty straightforward otherwise.
And there is a provision in there, Aaron, where we have to give them notice if we're going to do some, and they've already signed a letter acknowledging that. So if you'll just meet with them about timing, if we're going to do a little bit of work down there to update the maintenance, just they already gave us a letter approving it, so they just, but they want to coordinate with them, see how long it's going to be shut down and that sort of stuff. Yeah, again, we're trying to work with the Y if they sell it, you know, they don't, they can't sell it with a thirty year parking agreement attached to it. So we're trying to help them get value. Yet we also need to protect our parking for our police department for as long as we can. So this was a year in the making for what seems like a fairly simple lease, but thanks to Laura and I helped a little bit and the YMCA board and we finally got to something that worked, so. Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for city council to authorize the mayor to sign the lease agreement between the Wenatchee Valley Young Men's Christian Association and the city of Wenatchee for parking.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Roger Nostatian, second by Councilmember Hornby to authorize the mayor to sign the lease agreement between the Wenatchee Valley Young Men's Christian Association and the city of Wenatchee for parking. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Jessica Shaw, wastewater treatment plan amendment. What's going on?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Jessica Shaw, Deputy Public Works Director, Utilities. And tonight I have a very brief presentation on our facilities plan amendment for our wastewater treatment plant. So this is our planning document that we try and update every five years to kind of look ahead for the next ten years, to look at regulations, to look at what's working at the plant, what's not working and figure out what's next so that we can keep that very important piece of city infrastructure functioning and smelling as nice as possible. So this, this most recent amendment, I just wanted to recognize our project team. We had Jacobs Consulting, great team of expert people that gave us some very good information about our wastewater facilities and helped us plan for the future. And also on our team was a few city staff members that helped me out, Mike Hodgson, our wastewater supervisor, Darcy Madioda, our utility planner, and Jeremy Hoover, our senior utilities engineer. So we had a great project team. So what we did is we completed a condition assessment of the whole treatment plant. We looked at some real problem areas. As you can see, you know, we have lots of things going on. We had some problems with our digester a couple weeks ago. We also are seeing some settling issues at the wastewater treatment plant. We looked at some of our projects, like we proposed building a new secondary clarifier and that was supposed to be in twenty twenty three. Obviously, we've postponed that and Jacobs did a great job of helping us really look at what are some things we could do to to continue looking at when do we really need that project, right? So that we're spending our money wisely and putting our money towards the best projects. So our goal really is to be have reliable and redundant operations at our treatment plant to stay, stay working. So the projects that came out of that for the next ten years, now these are kind of grouped together, they're they're spread out, but kind of lumped together. We. We are in need of a new administration building. The building's at the end of its life. We can't remodel it, and remodeling is much more expensive than actually remodeling one of our other buildings, or perhaps building a new building. So that's high on the list. We, of course, also, as I mentioned, our digesters are getting old and they need to be rehabbed. That's part of the goal of getting that new digester built. Also grit improvements, that's the sand and things that come in. And of course, we want to be good neighbors, right? So we want to make sure our plant smells good and looks good to all of the folks that will be living, working, and recreating around us. And then farther out, we have a few other things to think about, such as another clarifier, and of course, replacing our disinfection system. So total, we're looking about $30 million of improvements in the next 10 years. So as I mentioned before, the treatment plant, right now, we're housing all the equipment and supplies for the collections group, and we're looking at possibly reusing that building as our new administration building for the treatment plant. We also have this issue out at our public services center where we're out of room for police, parks, recreation streets. So one of the utility projects is not directly identified in this plan, but it kind of comes out of this plan that we'll be bringing forth to you guys this year is that we're looking at building a new storage building and garage that'll move that equipment out of the treatment plant. Because right now, our collections crew, they are based out of public services, but they drive down to the treatment plant to get their equipment, and then they end their day back at public services. So there's some improved efficiency, and we need the storage at the treatment plant as well. We need that space back. So we will have a utility-funded project to, to build a new building. And I have a photo of the public services site here, making use of that expanded property area. So more to come on that. And so finally, our next steps are, of course, this is a planning document. This is our best laid plans, what we think is next. And so we'll be looking at the financial of our sewer fund, of how do we, how does this, how do these projects fit into our financial plan for the future? We're going to keep working on funding opportunities. I also wanted to recognize Brenda Blanchfield. She supported us in a recent grant we submitted for doing some improvements to our digesters. So we're waiting to hear, we'll know this summer, whether we got that grant opportunity, and we're looking at many other opportunities as well. That's part of the financial plan, chasing as many of those grants as we can. And then the last goal that I wanted to share with you is that we are trying to stay within that current adopted rates, the 6% annual increases. Our goal is to continue with that. So more to come on the financial. I'll be back in probably a few months to share more of where we're at. And also, these photos here are the current three capital projects that are occurring at the treatment plant right now. We have our digester and equipment building construction. Those are the blowers that Jeremy came and talked to you about a while ago that are going to be replaced very soon. And of course, the one, the last picture is of our drying bed expansion project, which should be wrapping up later this summer. Any questions about the wastewater facilities plan?
I want you to know Jessica brought me a gift at the public services meeting. It was a bag of the stuff that comes out of the drying beds.
I'm happy to bring gifts for everyone if you're interested.
Show and tell, next meeting. Yeah, yeah, you should bring some for all the council to see.
All right, yeah, no problem.
What? You did. And it's hard. It's, yeah.
It's fertilizer.
Like a little rocky something, yeah. No.
Thank, thank you for that.
Any questions for Jessica? The public services committee saw this, and obviously, I think they do a fantastic job, and it's a hugely complicated, sophisticated, expensive piece of machinery that operates that, and they do a great job of managing it. So thank you for that and your team. And any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for the city council to adopt the city of Wenatchee wastewater treatment plant facilities planned amendment.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt the city of Wenatchee wastewater treatment plan facilities plan amendment as provided. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to talk, tell them about our vector truck?
Sure. So Wednesday, our vector truck, our crew, water crew.
Our old vector truck.
Our old vector truck. So if you may recall, we had taken the old vector truck and recycled it down to the water crew, because they use it quite frequently. It saves a lot of cost as far as being able to excavate in a smaller area rather than tearing up as much sidewalk and asphalt. It's also very quick and saves a lot of labor costs. So they were working on a hydrant on the corner of Eisenhardt, and a fire started. They heard a pop and saw flames. They ran and got height, or ran and got their fire extinguishers out of their truck and attempted to put the fire out, but it got away very quickly and had huge flames. So they immediately called 911, and the fire department arrived, took two fire trucks to put out the fire. So sadly, we're missing a very important piece of equipment that we had hoped to be able to use a while longer while we saved up money to be able to replace that truck. So maybe meeting with the insurance jester on Tuesday to find out the fate of our, of our water vector truck. So thankfully, though, no one was injured, and we didn't catch the hillside on fire or any neighboring houses. So thank you to our fire department.
Jessica and I have a saying now, it could have been a lot worse, and we'll use that on numerous things right now.
It definitely could have been worse.
Could have been worse. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Jacob Hyler, Spring Water Avenue Improvements. And Spring Water Avenue Improvements, you're on here twice.
There you go. Good evening, mayor and council. So the first item I have for you tonight is a request for a budget amendment and then awarding the construction contract. So a little bit of background on the project. The city was awarded a TIB grant in December of 2019 for about $1.9 million to rebuild Spring Water Avenue between Woodward Drive and Western Ave. Out of that work came the need to also replace some stormwater main in Western Avenue, essentially from Spring Water up to Central, thereby allowing stormwater generated above Western on Spring Water to be channeled towards our Maple Street basin where we have additional capacity. We issued an RFQ for consultant services in October of 2020, and then brought in action to the city council on February 11th, 2021, to award the design contract to Partitee. Since that time, we've been working to acquire right-of-way and design the project. The project, some of the improvements include a widened roadway with 11-foot travel lanes and five-foot bike lanes, new stormwater infrastructure, an illumination system.
Sidewalks on both sides?
Sidewalks on both sides, yeah. Curved veteran sidewalk on both sides. And then we've also got pretty substantial walls at the west end of that corridor where it starts climbing up towards Woodward. The project was advertised for bids on April 12th, and the city was fortunate to receive eight bids. The bids were competitive, and I feel like we, we received good bids on this project. KRCI out of East Wenatchee was our lowest bidder at a total of about $2.72 million. In terms of fiscal impact, we were looking, the, the council agenda item that I put before you was, was indicating that we'd need, you know, north of $350,000 in order to fully fund the project. Fortunately, earlier this week, we found out from the TIB that we were awarded an extra $285,000 worth of grant funding. And so the budget amendment in your packet is, is a little bit off. What we, when we plug those numbers in, basically what the ask, the ask at this point is, is for an extra $29,000 from our arterial streets fund and an extra $24,000 from our stormwater fund. In terms of schedule, if it's awarded, we would be looking to start early June. The project includes 95 working days, so about 19 weeks worth of time. So we'd be wrapping up in October, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Obviously, this, you know.
I'm a council member of Baker.
Yeah, go ahead, Keith.
I asked, I asked a question earlier. I'm, I'm still a little concerned that this project plans eliminating all of the on-street parking on Spring Water. I think if you travel up and down Spring Water, you'll see that on-street parking is used quite a bit for that street. And with the new apartments that are going in, I think that's going to increase even more. I'm just wondering if there's any way that can be reconsidered in the designing of this.
At this point, it would be a very challenging thing to redesign. We've gone through and acquired right-of-way from, from every property on the south side of that corridor. We've also received an easement from WSU on the north side of that corridor in order to, in order to fit these improvements in. The way the corridor is laid out currently, we've got, I think, 30 feet worth of right-of-way prior to the acquisitions. And so there is some gravel shoulder on the north side of that road. Technically, that's outside of, of what was city right-of-way. And then the shoulder is limited on the, on the south side of the road. Interestingly enough, in one of our conversations as we were acquiring right-of-way, the, the property owner at that time asked that that shoulder be removed as part of our project. And so I certainly understand, you know, the, the convenience of having on-street parking in front of your house. This project is, it just doesn't design that way at this time.
And during that, you know, obviously, we have a team of people that work with the property owners in terms of buying right-of-way. Is there any concerns from any of the property owners that we're purchasing from saying, hey, they're concerned about losing on-street parking?
No, that was never brought up as, as a concern from the, the adjacent property owners.
But, but was that made clear, that on-street parking is going to completely go away there?
Yeah, it was. It was, we, in, in our negotiations with them, what we tried to do is provide them a layout of what those frontage improvements will look like in front of their house, what the new corridor looks like. And so, so yeah, I, my, my understanding is that was clearly.
All right, any other questions for Jac, for Jacob?
I have some, just a couple of the financial part. I'm just kind of curious. Mobilization, like we, we estimated 247,000, and then everybody else comes out lower. I'm not sure what mobilization is, but the other one that just pop out is a 66 illumination system complete. What is that?
That's your street lighting system. And so that's all the, the streetlights, the conduit to power them, the, the wire in that.
Everybody else thought we can, they can get it for a couple hundred thousand dollars less. Because, because your engineering, what, what's clue man is, we're a million dollars, we thought, last year, two years ago, we're always saying, get, get your act together, increase it 15%, and now I'm sitting there going, what are those two things?
Yeah.
So.
Yep. So, so our engineer's estimate was substantially higher than any of the bids that we received. Obviously, with the cost escalation that we've seen, you know, throughout the last couple of years, we've been working to, to, to try to catch up to what the, the market's doing. It is a little bit challenging to, to estimate some of these things, because when we do this, we're basing it off of historical bid tabs. And so we don't, we don't have info, you know, as good of information as the contractors do when they're pricing these things for themselves. And so we're taking, you know, where we're seeing bid tabs, projecting that out to today. And fortunately, it came in a lot lower than that.
And illumination system complete is lights.
Lights, the, the electrical service to, to power those, the conduit and wire associated with it.
Trying to learn something. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Jacob?
Will these be the newer LED-style lights or kind of, what kind of lighting package will this?
Yep, they're, they're LEDs. And so as you might remember, the Schlan PUD had a project, I think in 2018, that went through countywide and replaced all the high-pressure, pressure sodium lights, the orange lights, with LEDs. And so that's now our standard.
So does that require upper conversion box on the ground? Like, I think there was one, a couple of them on Fifth Street where that had to be done, or is it all done in the head of the light now?
So we'll be getting a new service cabinet at the corner of Western and Spring Water off of the PUD transformer. And then from there, that ends up, powers run from there to each streetlight. And so I, I'm not sure on all the conversion stuff. Electrical's a little bit outside of my wheelhouse, but that is.
Yeah, I'm just more concerned about the location of that cabinet than if there is one. Is that down at ground level? Is that up on the pole?
It's, it's at ground level, and it's, it's probably about six feet tall and a couple feet wide, sitting near where the, the PUD has a water pump station and then the, the garden that's there.
Okay, thank you.
It, it creates a sight distance issue, just saying.
Yeah, and there, there was that, and just the actual aesthetics of it on Fifth Street that a few people complained about. So maybe our commission can do something to dress it up, and as long as it's next to something that already exists, that'll kind of heighten a little bit, maybe.
All right, any other questions for Jacob? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for the city council to amend the project budget and pending TIB concurrence, award the contract for construction of the Spring Water Avenue improvements to the lowest responsible bidder, and further authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Kulas, to amend the project budget and pending TIB concurrence, award the contract for construction of the Spring Water Avenue improvements to the lowest responsive bidder, and further authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now consultant services to manage the project.
Correct. And so I'll spare you all the details on the, on the project this time. We were not able to have our design consultant continue through to construction management services due to staffing limitations. And so we issued a request for qualifications for a consultant to manage the project for us through construction. We only received one response. It was from TranTech Engineering LLC. They were a, they had a small design portion of, of the, the Spring Water Avenue design project itself. They also managed the West Casimir Bridge for Schlan Towny. And so they gave a favorable reference for, for their work on that project. And so with that, I do not have a scope and fee from them at this point. I was hoping to have that today, but they've, they're working through some material testing negotiations on their end. And so I'm asking that we authorize the mayor to negotiate with them, obviously with our project budget in mind.
You mean, I can't go over the budget?
Try not to.
Any questions for Jacob?
What's the amount we're talking about?
350,000.
Thinking of changing jobs?
It does, just for, for reference. It is, you know, it's, it's not one person that's, that's working to manage these projects for us. We have someone onsite at all times. We have a couple people in the office working to get through the paperwork, process change orders, review the materials submittals that are coming in. And so even, you know, whether it's, whether it's us doing it or a consultant doing it, it's a pretty heavy lift for each project.
All right, so I entertain a motion.
And I'll make a motion for city council to authorize the mayor to negotiate with TranTech Engineering LLC for construction management services on the Spring Water Avenue Improvements project, and further authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Roger Nostatian, second by Councilmember Hornby, to authorize the mayor to negotiate with TranTech Engineering LLC for construction management services on the Spring Water Avenue Improvements Project, and further authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jacob. Appreciate it. Thanks for all your work this week on the Spring Water stuff. Sorry for harassing you. More than normal. Hello, Charlotte.
Hello.
Ready to start designing and doing some outreach on our Red Apple Road project.
Yes, so we were awarded a grant from TIB back in December. This is the Red Apple Road project from Vista Place to Miller Street, behind the high school, basically. So you folks, thank you, approved that the mayor could sign the grant agreement. We sent a request for qualifications out. We got a good amount of submittals. We got a nice pool of consultants, and we selected SCJ Alliance ultimately as the most qualified. And the reason we picked them is because they're really good at public outreach, which you folks had indicated was really important a part of this project, and we agree. So we would like your approval for the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city with them. And then as far as public outreach, we're, I negotiated in that we're not going to do just our one typical public outreach meeting. We're going to do one right at the beginning, we're thinking July-ish, and we're going to do like a neighborhood pop-up style. So we'll invite the neighborhood to come, and so we won't be coming to them with much preconceived beyond what's just already was in the grant application. And so we're going to get their input about what they feel is necessary and what their priorities are for the, for the project. And so we'll take all that outreach, or all that input from them and go back, and then that's what we're going to determine our design on. And then I also put in the contract, we're going to go back to them once we've gotten And then I also put in the contract, we're going to go back to them once we've gotten a good, solid design and go back to them and say, this is what we have designed based on your input, and make sure that we're following what the community wants and listening.
Strong word.
Any questions?
No, thank you for making sure all that public outreach happened. And when you selected SCJ Alliance, that was an important part of what you guys were looking at, because I think from this council, they're pretty anxious to make sure that that's part of this project. Any questions for Charlotte? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve and authorize the mayor to negotiate with SCJ Alliance for the public outreach services for Red Apple Road dash Vista Place to Miller Street, project number 2315, and further authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to approve and authorize the mayor to negotiate with SCJ Alliance for public outreach services for Red Apple Road to Vista Place to Miller Street, project number 2315, and authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Charlotte.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Prozenjak, budget amendment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, the city is involved in many projects and initiatives that keep it very busy. And when the budget was adopted, when the 2023 budget was adopted back in November, it was impossible to anticipate all of the many things that the city would get involved with this year. And already through five months, Finance Committee has reviewed and approved several budget adjustments for various projects that are listed in the agenda packet tonight. And so to legally amend the budget, it has to come before council and be approved by a majority plus one vote of the council. So I guess I'm here to answer any questions and ask to approve--
So we talked a little bit at Finance Committee, Brad, about, you know, some of these are sort of carryovers from last year that we didn't get complete, like our stormwater on, down on, whatever street it is. And obviously, Safe Park Two, drug into this year. Some of this has corresponding revenue associated with it. I mean, there's a lot into this. It's not we're just spending 7.8 million in the dollars.
No, I quickly had run through it, and 2.7 million of that was stuff that was budgeted in 2022 that just didn't get completed. And so now we need the budget authority to finish it off in 2023. You can see in the middle of the list of budget adjustments, 2 million of it are coming from reserves for increasing the size of the street preservation project that's going to come, that's happening this year. And well, a million point three of this is administrative adjustments that sometimes when we're moving funds between one fund to another, we have to still budget that authority to have that expense in one fund, because each fund stands alone and has to have its own legally adopted budget. So sometimes that ends up making this number look larger than what we're actually, the cash out, the net effect, the cash out.
Yeah, because these are all the expenses. Sometimes there's revenue, sometimes this expense was in a different fund, it needs to be in another fund, so it's not like we're--
Yeah, I think on the, well, on that Exhibit A, there's 2.6 million of this is offset by revenues.
Any other questions for Brad? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion if we have one.
Your honor, I move for City Council to adopt ordinance number 2023-06, amending the 2023 budget as adopted by ordinance number 2022-28, to revoke, recall, or decrease all or a portion of total appropriations provided and entering findings that this ordinance is in the best interest of the city.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, the second by Councilmember Roger Nostetian, to adopt ordinance number 2023-06, amending the 2023 budget as adopted by ordinance number 2022-28, to revoke, recall, or decrease all or a portion of the total appropriations provided and entering findings that this ordinance is in the best interest of the city.
Any discussion? Hearing none.
I just want to make a comment--
Go ahead, Keith.
--that since we're just halfway through the year and, you know, we try and stay to the conservative side, this is, this was kind of shocking to see that everything has added up. I trust the Finance Committee, they've been on top of everything, but that's a pretty huge adjustment to a budget halfway through the year. So I'm hoping that we're looking at the next six months a lot more conservatively and maybe even into next year.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brad. Historic Preservation Board appointment. Stephen, it says Glenn here, but it doesn't quite look like Glenn.
I think Glenn is in Taiwan. Maybe he's waiting for a plane still. Not exactly sure where he is right now, but he's not here. Good evening, Mayor.
You know, he's got a big smile on his face.
Yes.
Because he's not here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here this evening with Resolution 23-11, which would appoint Blythe Kelly to the Historic Preservation Board. Blythe submitted an application. We have two current vacancies on the board. The board met and has recommended that the council appoint Blythe to, in an unexpired term, which would, the term would complete itself in December 31 of 2024. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and staff also recommends that you appoint Blythe to this position.
Looks like she lives in the district.
She lives in the Grandview Historic District. Is new, newer to the community, but is interested in historic preservation, has remodeled a mid-century home in a different location, and has several connections to the Grandview District and other board members that, yeah.
Good. Any questions for Stephen? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I will move for City Council to approve Resolution Number 2023-11, appointing Blythe Kelly to the Wenatchee Historic Preservation Board to fill a vacant term expiring December 31, 2024.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, the second by Councilmember Cuevas, to approve Resolution 2023-11, appointing Blythe Kelly to the Wenatchee Historic Preservation Board to fill the vacant term expiring December 31, 2024.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Mayor's report, you know, it's been a couple weeks since we've met. I think that Apple Blossom went really, really well. Congratulations to Darcy and everybody. Chief did go over some of the police calls earlier today with me. They were just slightly higher, but nothing to get overly concerned about. So I think overall, that all went really, really well. All Service Club luncheon was wonderful, as always. So we do have a new police officer, so Norman Chris, who arrived from Austin, Texas. So he is our latest lateral. So was at his oath of office last Friday, and so welcoming him. He'll be quicker through the FTO program because he's already an officer. I did go over, you know, the city of East Wenatchee has a new police department, the old building at Simon and Mac Island Road that was owned by the Telford family, so I went over for their grand opening. And I do want, I don't know if Rob or Jacob wants to talk about the latest round of grants that we've received. I know we've got three new ones in the last week or so, so what's the latest of all that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we, you know, we had two presentations tonight for TIB project we're working on. And then just this week, I think we've learned of additional 4.5 million in different grants coming in. A new roundabout at Okanagan and Crawford. Our RFBs by Orchard Middle School, and some sidewalk improvements.
Yeah, Sunset Highway, Sunset Street sidewalk got improved.
Yeah, that's, it was about 695, I think. The first one I mentioned was near 2 million. And then the one that I'm most excited about is the improvement of the old Pioneer Irrigation District easement right behind Easies and Discount Tire. There was a swath there that they abandoned years before I got here and was sold to the adjacent property owners and has been identified as a great ped bike path that would be off the avenue and would allow eventually for people to get. Our goal is for bicyclists and peds to get out to Chatham Hills safely. Eventually, we'll get additional Kennedy Bridge on the Wenatchee River there. But so that's another $2 million for the acquisition of those property rights and the building of that path. So was there one more, Jacob? So, so, yeah, the super exciting, we, the engineering group, Jacob's group keeps just, you know, a lot of projects coming their way. And I was telling others, you know, if we didn't have Confluence Parkway, we would be extremely busy to begin with. And we have this $200 million project we're trying to build as well, so. But it's great to be part of the city. We're doing well.
Now, I think it's just a sign that when we make applications, they look at us and they know that we can execute what we say we can execute, and they're, they don't want to give money to projects that are going to fail or not get done. And so congratulations to Rob and all the engineering team for putting together, you know, they come to you guys and say, hey, here are the ones we're going to apply for, and we say yes, and they continue to score high and do well. So I think it's just another sign that we've got great staff and the things that are going on in this city, people want to be part of. Laura, anything to add on the mayor's report?
Just two items for next week. On 5/23, we have the Lincoln Park official opening. A reminder that that park is not yet open, it's still under construction. There's a lot of excitement from that neighborhood and the community in general, but it is still under construction. So 5/23 at 4 o'clock is the official opening, and then the Okanagan Community Garden, also next week, 5/25 at 4:30. So two really exciting events coming up.
Recycling event on Saturday. So thanks to our staff for putting this together. And so these things are always very popular and they fill up. So if you have any stuff that needs to be taken down there, please do so. Councilmembers, for the good of the order?
Rivercom is in the middle of interviewing applicants for the new executive director, so that's happening some of it tonight, more of it tomorrow.
Okay. Sounds like we got three good finalists.
I think it's down to two now, but--
It's down to two?
Yep.
Guess we have two good finalists.
Two good finalists.
Yep. Anybody else? Linda, Jose, Michael, Mark?
The museum board met this week, and among other things, there's just kind of a heads up for the mayor's office and parks and public works that before too long, they're going to initiate a discussion on the tie, as the building design for the museum's redo proceeds, tying, you know, the entrance is going to be moved to the Centennial Park side, and they'll be wanting to talk about how to tie the park and, of course, the use of that alley that serves the businesses down at the end. So that may be coming before too long.
Yeah, Mariah sent me an email, and I think she's coming to meet with us next week. And so I think she wanted to talk not only about that, but, you know, we've agreed to some funding and was trying to figure out the timing of that, because I think they got some state money--
Yep.
--to help. So just sort of starting to think about what that timing looks like.
Yep.
Yes, Travis?
The Reimagine Group met. We did a site tour of the downtown and Columbia Street, as well as we did a public open house at the Locatelle Event Center at Pivas. Great raves from everybody that attended. They're excited about the visioning, the forward thinking, so things to come. And once again, parking came up.
Parking comes up every time, is it?
Yeah. Never heard about it.
Yeah. And I'm not getting dunked in a dunk tank on Saturday morning--
Well, I was going to let you mention that, Mayor, so if you want something exciting, come down to Pivas. Saturday, starting at about 10, there will be some ceremonial stuff. And then it's also the opening day for the farmer's market. There'll be some additional invasive species, as well as adaptive cycling, so it's a big deal for our 10-year anniversary, but then a dunk tank.
The mayor and myself will be in a dunk tank raising money for the West Side Project. Come down, have fun.
Yep. Did you call me an invasive species?
Nope.
All right. Just mentioned it in passing.
Yeah. The PUD invasive species group will be--
Oh, okay, got it. All right, anything else for the good of the order? We don't meet next week, so we will see you all again two weeks from now on the 25th. With that, we are adjourned.